All right. I'm on and I hear you.
Great, thanks for being patient. We had a little bit of technical difficulty.
No problem. We had to try several times to get back in, but that's okay. I'm going on mute because I am sure you're not interested in road noise and things like that.
Okay.
Hey, hello, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, June 13th Board of Trustees Noon Meeting. Due to technical difficulties, we are getting a late start. It is 12:10. First, we'll begin with roll call. And Susan Ainsley?
Present.
Kathleen Yen?
Present.
Wolfgang Bomer?
Present, on the phone.
Carolyn Greemault is present and Ronnie Hardaway is absent. We have a quorum here in the Village Office. And then we'll begin with reports from staff. Jody?
Oh, we have lots going on. Tax payments went out and they're due by July 1st. So remind everybody to pay your taxes. We have a change order for the sewer expansion project, which has seven items included in it that needs to be approved. So I'm requesting you to approve Vacri Construction Corp. Change Order Number Three, Sanitary Sewer Benefit Area Expansion, Cuba Heights Road, East Shore Drive, and Twin Glens Road in the amount of $246,295.67. What that makes up is $350,000 to delete the roadway milling and paving of Cuba Heights and Twin Glens Road. It has adding trees and shrubs for $6,637.05. An additional line side discount for pump station number one in the amount of $2,625. Repair of uncharted concrete box culvert on East Shore Drive, which adds $2,208.28. Installing an additional pressure and gravity lateral on Cuba Heights Road, which increases it by $14,934. Additional water stops at East Shore Drive and Twin Glens, which is an additional $49,000. And lastly, storm sewer extension at Autumn Ridge and Pump Station Number One, which adds another $28,300.
So how much is this adding to the overall project?
It is taking away $246,295.67. So it's been reviewed by T.G. Miller and John. So it's all set to go.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the change orders?
No.
I move that we accept the change orders?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I've received the agreement from Tompkins County for the Parks and Trails Grant. It is the $5,000 grant we will be receiving to use towards the bridge replacement in Lansing Trails, which that was previous resolution number 7,033. The trustees would need to pass a resolution to authorize Carolyn to sign the agreement. French Natalie has looked it over and had a couple of questions regarding whether some numbers were correct or not. Darby explained that the program was set up for municipalities, complete projects within six months. So that is why the project completion photos are expected by the end of the year. So she answered basically Natalie's questions and everything was fine with Natalie. So I'd entertain a motion for you guys to authorize the deputy mayor to sign the Tompkins County Agreement to receive $5,000 to be used for the bid bridge replacement in Lansing Trails.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So the bridge replacement, there's no outstanding legal concerns at all?
No, Natalie reviewed it. Yep. Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Wolfgang. Okay.
Let's see, I already told you tax bills are coming in. I went through the comprehensive plan and made some notes for the committee, which I have given to Carolyn. Would you like to approve the vouchers? Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Yes. Is there any questions or issues on the vouchers?
No. Already got that answered, so thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
Susan, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Would you like to approve the June 3rd minutes that were sent out to you?
Does anyone have any changes to the June 3rd minutes?
I don't. Were there any changes submitted for the June 3rd draft minutes?
I think there was one spelling change.
I move that we approve the June 3rd minutes.
Second.
Does everybody here can vote?
Yep.
All those in favor? Everyone approves.
Yeah, I'm in favor as well. So whether you take my vote or not doesn't matter, but I saw the meetings.
Thank you, Wolfgang.
And lastly, I do not have any items for Monday night's agenda. And Wolfgang and Ronnie will not be here. So if you do not have any other items for Monday night, would you like to cancel that meeting?
I think that if there's no outstanding issues, we could consider canceling. I move that we cancel Monday night's meeting for lack of agenda items. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And I think I'm done. You got that, Wolfgang? You're not missing on Monday. You don't have to call in.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody. Very efficient. Mike, you're next.
In a hurry, John?
No.
Okay. Didn't mean over.
Going around tail.
I've got, before I get into the monthly activity, I've got a couple of items. As per our village code, whatever I send out, I order a remedy or a notice of violation, once it reaches its termination point, if we are to extend it or if I'm to get an appearance ticket, I need board approval for that. I have two of them here. One of them you're very familiar with. It is the mall stormwater. To give you, do you want the history of this or have you remember everything that's been happening with it? It's been going on since last July 7th.
I'll give Kathleen a brief history because she's over here for the...
Last July 7th, I had sent a letter to their business manager about the issues that we're having with the western section of the stormwater was jumping on a really heavy downpour or a lengthy rain that would jump the banks and head into Shannon Park and cause all kinds of problems. So I had sent the letter July 7th and we had discussed ways of doing it, best practices and how to attempt to get it done. Nothing was actually done. So come January 15th of this year, I sent out the original order to remedy, knowing that it was going to be difficult for them to do because of the season, you know, January, February, it'd be tough to get over there. So really, nothing was done. And so when the 30 days came up, I came to the Board of Trustees to ask for an extension to, I believe it was the end of April. In the meantime, I was told that they could get in. Well, they told me they were having a contractor come in at the end of April to get this done. It may have been too wet. I don't know. It may have been a lack of effort. I have no idea. But I was told several times that they were going to start it. So I said, okay, this, we're going to have to get through the process of this. So I ended up sending a second notice of violation. This was on May 3rd and the due date would be the beginning of June. I was told that the contractor would be there at the end of May. The contractor wasn't there at the end of May. He told me it was too wet. And then recently, I have been told it'd be the second week of June, which they have not even called in 811 yet. They haven't called Dick's Safe yet. So I'm just, I'm just kind of done messing with it and I'm coming to you to ask if I can go get an appearance ticket from the Lansing Town Court and proceed with this.
I think that because of the ownership structure of the mall, it's definitely will move things much quicker if we go and get the appearance ticket at this point. I think also, Mike has already gone and bent over backwards to make it as easy as possible for them. And I actually think this will make it easier for them.
Since there's been no action, they've already had an extension.
Several times, yeah.
So should we make a motion?
Jody, why don't you? It'd probably be best if it's on.
I move that we authorize our code officer to...
Appearance ticket.
Request an appearance ticket from the Lansing Town Court. Second. All those in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Wolfgang. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The second one, I don't know whether some of you remember this one. It was 1503 East Shore Drive. It was Don Swarrenjen. He has equipment out in front. As you've got East Shore on the right-hand side, he has some abandoned vehicles out there. He has a school bus out there and other items, storage trailers. I did send, originally, the reason I sent a violation notice for that was I did get a complaint. It was an ISO. So what I had done was I had sent them a letter asking them, you know, if they could comply by moving, either moving the equipment out back or accepting to clean up the area. I tried a few times to get ahold of someone, never did, never could. So on December 19th of last year, I sent out a notice of violation. And I got a call back from Don's daughter, Luanne Bangs, who said that her father, the owner of the place, was in Florida and wouldn't be back until sometime in April or May. So once again, I came to the Board of Trustees to get an extension to the end of May, hoping that they would be able to resolve this. In the meantime, since the termination date came up, I've gone over there. I've seen things have been moved, but it's obviously not completed. So I sent an email out to Luanne Bangs again to find out what the situation was. I immediately got a call from the owner, Don Swarrenjen, asking me to come out and speak to him about it. Mr. Swarrenjen is a 93-year-old gentleman who is very fit and is doing it all himself. He has already taken four or five, he said he can provide receipts if we needed to, four or five container loads of metal out of there. He's moved around some of the equipment and he is working to keep, you know, keep progress going. I asked him, or well, I said to him, I said, if I went to the Board of Trustees and asked for an extension, when do you think you could have it done? He had suggested the end of August he would keep working on it. I am requesting from you to not get the appearance ticket, but extend it to the end of August. This isn't a life and death situation. Most of the, not, I wouldn't say trash, most of the items are well off the road at this point. So that's kind of my recommendation would be to extend it to the end of August.
It's nice to hear that immediately following your email, they immediately responded. And so obviously, and you've seen them making progress at the property.
Yep.
So under those circumstances where they are being responsive and he just perhaps because of his age or the complexity of the job needs a little more time, I think your estimation that to award that more time is quite reasonable.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, it's not impacting the other property other than aesthetics and, you know, like the stormwater is, they are responding. There is progress. Yeah.
I drove by, sorry, I drove by last week and I think he did already quite a bit of work. If he does everything by himself, he is actually making really good progress. So it looks a lot better than last year.
Thank you, Wolfgang. Appreciate the first-person perspective. Would you like us to authorize you to write a letter granting an extension?
That would be fine. That would be fine.
Yes, you don't need a motion to that, Jody, do we?
We should just have a, let's just have a resolution.
Move that.
That's on record.
We'll move that Mike authorized, Mike, our code officer is authorized to grant a two-month extension till the end of August for the completion that he requested in his first notice of violation.
For 1503 East Shore Drive.
For 1503 East Shore Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And Wolfgang?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay, everyone is in favor. Motion, resolution passes.
Address again.
1503 East Shore Drive. Swarrenjen, you'll appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
As far as summary, a lot of it's stormwater. I'm coming up on the six-month deadline for the new MS4. They kind of give you a guideline of where you need to be so that you can, that you meet all of their regulations come two years from now. So they kind of gave you just checkpoint, which would be upgrading our stormwater management program, which I've started to do. We did have one established. It's a matter of upgrading it to the new language that the MS4 would like us to put into it. So that shouldn't be all that much of an issue. Still working on mapping and also with the Stormwater Coalition, they have two people that are coming up and they, I think they went down, they mapped Dart Drive, basically so that they know where the water is flowing, which is exactly what I'm doing when I go out and take pictures. And I map it on my maps. Of course, I do it a little more crudely than they do with magic marker and everything else, but it's still doing the same. Everything's still working out the same way. So I'm continuing to work on that. We will need to, it'll come to the Board of Trustees, we will need to upgrade our IDDE code section, which is the section on the list of discharge. That's our, I've recommended some changes to Natalie and she's looking over the items to make sure that they're legally defined. There's not really that much changes. Everything, the village, the village has everything it needs for the MS4 updates. It's a matter of getting everything in that D E C wants. So it's kind of a hunt and peck method. And until we get audited, it's going to be tough to tell whether we have exactly what we...
So when would be the deadline required for the code update?
August 1st.
August 1st of this year.
We've pretty much had the information. It's a matter of clicking and bringing it over.
So, but we need Natalie to have that for us at our next meeting.
I think the deficit...
That part, as long as it's in motion, I mean, they're not going to penalize us because we don't have it right on that date. We are moving towards that. So these are kind of guidelines.
It's not, so it's not a date?
They don't come check it. They would like to see it done by then. So we're moving, we're moving along. And I emailed Natalie yesterday about it and she goes, it's on my desk. I'm going to get to it.
Okay, I might just send her a reminder that we will want to do that resolution at the next meeting.
So what we would need to do though, if it's an update to the code, you'll have to have a local law, you'll have to have a local law written up. We'll have to set a public hearing and then have, and note, put notice in the paper and then you would have your public hearing at the next meeting. So even if you got it for the first meeting in July, then you could have a last meeting in July, you could...
Okay, so that will be the goal. That will be the goal.
To be honest with you, I was concerned where we were as far as how are we doing compared to other municipalities? And we had just had a stormwater meeting and frankly, we're way above it. We're way ahead of anybody else. So, and that has nothing to do with me. That's had something to do with how Marty set things up and how things, so now I just take it from there.
Good job, Marty.
So is the mapping update also included in that?
The mapping, they'd like to have you have some progress in the mapping. I've done two or three sections. I can show you what I've done, but two or three sections of the village. That is not required to be completely done until two years. So we do have some time. I go out on days like, nice days like this and go out and do mapping and whatnot. It's actually better to go in spring and fall because you don't have a lot of junk to walk through to take pictures of your culverts and whatnot.
So when you say sections, how many sections have you divided the village into?
Done, well, I did the Health and Human Resource Area. I've already gone up to the Airport Business Attack Area up there. That one's done. And I started my way down Bowmax. So I was...
But if you're calling it sections, would you say you've done two out of 10 sections? I don't know what a big a section is.
It might be, close guess, yeah.
Approximately, okay.
I mean...
And we're just trucking along.
The business areas are going to be more dense than residential areas for mapping. So I've kind of attacked those first.
Good. Thank you.
Building permits, they are picking up. It was kind of dead there a little bit. IJ Construction on Norway, they're going to start their other three plaques. That's, that's the last of the building, buildings for your Lansing Trails Two. Whether they go on to Lansing Trails Three or not, I have no idea. Gaslight is starting. I just went through the plan review for the building that hit there. They are working on that. They're going to be putting all new wiring in that. The building itself didn't have, existing, didn't have firewalls between two, between all of the apartments. So they're going to end up putting all that in. So the safety standard is going to be brought up quite a bit from where it was. That building is completely new wiring, which is a no-no anymore. So that's going to get changed.
Okay.
Fire inspections, they are all on schedule. Did you two want to do the planning board or do you want me to review the planning board?
Planning board?
It's to be continued on every item.
Why don't you go ahead, Mike?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll give the highlights and you can... The Bowman Group, which is doing the storage facility for the dicks through the Best Buy section over there, they, they have got a couple items that they have to hand in and that seems to be running relatively smooth. So that should, that should kind of happen. If you don't know what that, what that is, they're having some inside indoor storage and they're also having some outside storage for contractors and whatnot to be able to use that area. Lansing Meadows, we're coming down to, I would imagine in the next meeting, we'll have some type of, I guess, some type of answer, some type of decision on the revocation of his special permit. And that revocation will be only for Phase Two. We have other ways of getting Phase One completed, which once, once they pass that resolution, then I can start working on getting all the open items taken care of. And also, we had in there Peter Han, who is taking the, looking to take the edible arrangements, the small edible arrangements portion of the Tops Mall, well, it's the Applebee's Mall, and he's looking to put in a Mexican-type restaurant. Actually, it's like a Korean-Mexican fusion.
I haven't figured that out yet.
You know what the difference is that, you know how you go to Taco Bell, I'm not putting down Taco Bell or anything, and you have almost like burger that's been crushed up and that's the type of meat they put in there? Well, your Korean-type has nice big chunks of beef in there and it's a little more. If you've been down to... I can't remember the name of it.
You take the best of both cuisines and put them together. I'm sure it'll be great.
So it's a fusion of basically Korean-type food in a wrap.
Basically, it's not the same.
Korean, Mexican.
Okay. Looking forward to trying it.
And the other great thing happening is New York State is working on a draft for the new 2024 unified code. Isn't that great? A new code.
Okay.
For the fire code?
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
Every, every four years, they upgrade it.
Do you intend to put fire?
You can buy the $1,000 worth of books every, every four years. But no, they have, they, a lot of times they do have to upgrade it. Most of it that gets upgraded, I would imagine, again, would be the energy code. That's usually the one that gets mostly affected.
Do you know of any particular issues that will be more impacted?
Rumor has the energy code will be...
Tightened to be more energy efficient?
Yeah, there was, you could get, I can't remember what they call it because we didn't, we didn't adopt it, but there was an enhanced energy regulations, a municipality could have adopted it, which requires a more installation, more vapor barrier. It just, there's just all kinds of, it's like, I mean, you're here normally, this would have been here. Well, now they're going to bring everybody up to here. So the restrictions will be, it'll be a little more expensive to build a home, but they should be tighter. I don't know how they're going to be tighter, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Informative. Hi, John.
Sounds to me like they're going to have to, you're going to have to wear an oxygen mask just to be in your home because they're going to have it so tight that there's no electricity there.
I think you cough in the window or the curtains on the windows.
I forgot to tell you, but I just kind of wanted to bring it up. But Don, we were, when you mentioned the, the storage and Brent said as long as they don't disturb, since it's already impermeable surface, they don't need to do any stormwater. Don, he was mentioning it and he doesn't, he doesn't know where the measurements are on it, but anything an acre over, I think, has to treat for water quality. Say disturb that. I didn't know, Brent?
Yeah, there's, there's, if you don't have a stormwater plan, D E C wants you to incorporate two of the eight best practices. That's one of the best practices. Others are like planting trees, different, different landscaping. There's just like, there's, actually, there's 12 of them, but they call them eight, I mean. But they knew two out of those.
I just thought it was very interesting, you know?
That's, that's one of them.
Because they have impermeable surface there and they're just going to create more of it, but they're not changing, they're not going to create any more, but they're not going to have any less, I don't think, right?
Yeah, Brent's saying that, you know, if you take the buildings and you put them out there on the parking lot, that impermeable surface that you just covered...
Just raised it up, right.
So it's kind of a wash.
Yeah. Interesting. Just to give you a briefing of the DPW side of things, we finally got Cuba Heights Road paved. It's nice. Feels good. It was horrible.
It's much better.
To say the least, so. It seems nice to have.
How long to wrap it up?
They're going through right now and kind of doing like a punch list item, so as far as the sewer, but the, basically, the road is just striping, fixing some driveways here and there that, on that southbound lane.
Do you want me to get it, Jody?
I would say a couple more weeks.
What'd you say?
Couple more weeks before we really wrap it up.
And they're doing the striping. You're not doing it?
The contract, we're kind of contracted out. We have a different company come in and do the striping. I'm going to have to touch up some other roads in the village that kind of faded a little bit. So we spent nearly a week just raising the frames to match the blacktop grade that we needed to do and cleaning them out and inspecting everything. So that's going well. Vacri's probably got another two to three weeks before they finish up with the punch list items. Dart Drive started, Dart Drive Sidewalk and...
Two rounds of applause, one meeting.
So yeah, no, it seems nice. They, they got the road essentially closed, just to reduce the liability. But no, it's going well. You want me to wait for her to get back or?
Dart Drive started and leave with the rest of her. Sidewalk started. Go ahead.
With an exclamation mark, right?
I'm already gone. Say anything else crucial, I'll edit.
So that seems nice. They're doing some, we had some inflow and infiltration in the sanitary sewer line. So they're, they're asbestos, so they have to do asbestos abatement, do some clean air notifications around, around the area. So in that whole area, they notify everybody about it. So when they, when they get done with the sewer repairs, they'll be moving on to the waterline installation. We're receiving our, our final material order that we have completed. So that's nice to get that. I think some of the residents are, they dislike the construction, but they like the, the lack of traffic. You know what I mean? It's kind of like a trade-off, I guess, though. I know, I know, I'm a little concerned about Cuba Heights because we've been working down there after the pavement was done and the, the traffic and the speeds have increased significantly. the pavement was done and the, the traffic and the speeds have increased significantly. The guys are still doing their mowing. We started our first round of roadside mowing to, you know, clean the shoulders up a little bit so people can see approaching animals to the roadway. We did some, a storm crossing on Kuga Heights Road. We inspected all the pipes. Before we pave it, we want to make sure everything's, you know, refreshed there. And we've been working on a, so that's what part of the water stops are on the change orders. But we had to, the, the guys and the crew, we put a new drain line in next to the sanitary sewer line because it was getting some flow from the upper part of the creek, one of the Twin Glens Creeks. And it was running down there and it was bubbling out in one of the transformers down there. So we had to do a storm line in there to, another week to drain the water away from the sewer line. That'll ultimately help with the I and I as well. That's, that's really about, it's been a busy month and, you know, the holiday in there took a few days off, got a little bit behind on the mowing because it's really growing. Some of the parks have stalled out.
Down.
Yeah, some of the parks has.
This year was crazy.
Yeah. They stalled, like Daniker Park stalled out, but Nut Hickey Park and Hartel Park, they, they almost, they really doubled up. So, but any questions, concerns or anything?
No, just thank you. There's a lot of falls in the air.
Yeah, there is, there is. With that, that Dart Drive project, it's going to be a lot.
What's the timeline for the Dart Drive?
Substantially completed probably about fall, October-ish.
Will there be, will there be unpaved sections?
There will be.
And will there be going into winter unpaved sections?
Oh, no, we're not going to allow that again. No, we're just, we learned our lessons.
Okay.
Even if we have to just excavate them out a little bit to put a temporary code in there.
Excellent.
Yeah, no, there's, there's probably going to be a few change orders. We noticed that 57 Dart Drive, which is the school up at the top, did not have a sewer connection into the sanitary sewer line. So we're going to be putting a lateral in for them.
I'd want to sentence.
We're going to be putting a lateral in for them. And we put one in for, what's Rob Roy's address? Six Dart Drive? Eight Dart Drive?
Four, six.
Yeah, yeah. Six or eight, whatever, four, six, whatever. Their sewer lateral runs across Habitat for Humanity House property and connects in down at two Dart Drive sanitary sewer lateral. So we installed another one. If they choose to eventually decide to connect to their own, if there's problems with that line, they can just, no sense of them digging up the road to the other side of, the south side of the road to put in a service lateral. So typically, if every lot had been subdivided years ago, every lot would have gotten a service lateral to the property limits. But some of them were larger lots and then subdivided. So we're just catching up with them, getting them out of the road. So we don't have to have people digging up our road when it's all said and done.
Great.
So, so just, I, I couldn't hear part of what you said. So UCNS, University Corporate Nursery School, which is on Dart Drive near Warren.
57, yep.
That's getting the lateral.
Apparently they have a septic system, which, which, you know, we have a rule that you have to connect after three years of having sanitary sewers. So for some reason, they didn't have a connection into the, apparently it was an old house and they renovated into a school and then they didn't addition out back. We stopped up there today. So like I said, there'll be a few change orders here and there. One of the things, obstacles we run up against today was we did televising of the, of the sanitary sewer line and we, we noticed a big, you know, drain of, of groundwater coming into the sanitary sewer. And that's one of the things we're battling with for Kuga Heights. And when they excavated to make that connection, there was a big ball of concrete all the way outside of the manhole structure as long as this table. Well, if they start hammering on it, it's probably going to break the line. So we, we directed them to just, since it's already exposed, directed them to just remove the ball of concrete and make the pipe entry into the manhole. It's, it's a lot cleaner, simpler and for longevity wise, it makes sense. So we don't know about those obstacles, you know, until you excavate outside. And it's, it's asbestos concrete. When you're hammering on it, you have to do the abatement as well. So that's all I have. Any other questions?
The lead pipe.
Oh, the lead pipe. We've reduced the services down well below 100 now substantially. And there, Glenn at the production side, he's, he runs the production side of Bolden Point. He's still evaluating them. And then we have Mitchell Westfield that works for TJ Miller, he has reduced the numbers quite a bit too by pulling some plaits up through the county, county website. He went to the county planning side or something and was able to pull some plaits that we don't have back in there. I was able to log on to the county microfiche and I give them the password to kind of go through there and look at the plaits on that. There's very limited amount of information on there. For the amount, it seems like to me, for the amount of plans that we had at the village, when I went through them, it just seemed like there wasn't the amount of information I suspected there would be in there. So I was a little bit depressed to try to, to try to possibly rule out a lot of lead service lines by the, by going on to the county website. So.
It's a good thing you're old enough to use microfiche.
It definitely is a challenge. So anyway.
Well, as opposed to somebody who's 40 and younger has never seen microfiche.
Yeah, exactly. So you, you go order parts and stuff like that and they use that a lot to look up parts on. So, so, so it's like you have to train everybody how to do it because everybody knows how to run a computer. You know what I mean? So another thing is I hit a deer with a village pickup and it caused some damage on the front end. So. Yeah.
Everybody's okay.
I don't know if anybody's seen this or not, but there is an abundance of deer crossing the highways lately.
Yes.
That's all I have. So any other questions or anything?
No, just thank you all.
I know, right? Turtle crossings. I've seen a lot of turtles in the road. I mean, I've seen people like literally stop traffic to move a turtle out of the road. It's like, it ain't worth getting killed over, I can tell you that. Because people are just, anyway.
Kathleen, what do you have?
Oh, no, I'm, nothing.
Susan?
Oh, you mean report. I thought you meant a question for Jody.
No, no, no. All my meetings are next week. Okay. I have two small items. The REC partnership budget for 2025 was passed yesterday and because of the way that they calculate the payments for the different municipalities, even though we're going to do maintenance of effort plus 2%, the village, the village contribution will be reduced by $75 compared to 2024. That has to do with the fact we are actually using services at the same rate, but some of the other municipalities are using them at a greater rate. So $75 less. And I had one other thing that is slipping my mind. So.
Plan meeting is.
What'd you say?
At five comprehensive planning.
The comprehensive plan team meets on Monday at 6:15.
Oh, Monday.
I was going to suggest maybe that we meet at 7:30 now that the Board of Trustees meeting is canceled. So I was going to suggest that to the group, but if we can't, then 6:15.
I, I looked at the survey and, and that you sent out and everything, everything looked good. I was just a little confused on that. Is it EW? It's in the middle of mostly satisfied and then.
Oh, meh.
What is that?
Meh.
Yeah, meh, M-E-H. Yeah, I had to look it up. So I.
Change that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Neither satisfied nor unsatisfied.
Yeah.
I will, I will definitely change that. It was just slang for me.
But I looked it up and it, it did come up and I said, oh, okay. All right. It could be used several different ways.
What I want ultimately for those questions is for them to direct us forward. I only want to ask questions where if we get the answer, it will help us to craft the village is future. So even though there's a lot of things I'm interested in, I, that's really what I want to focus and our next community meeting, looking at those questions for, with that goal in mind.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, you asked for the email address for people and it was up to them to give it or not. I, I don't know if you want to add something in there. Do you want to be on the email notification for the newsletter?
Yeah, we did. Jody actually suggested that. So it's in there now.
Yeah. And, and it's perfect because it really helps us out.
Yeah.
They push out alerts that we have water may break or closed.
Yep.
Something like that.
Actually could add that specifically. Do you want to be on an alert list? Because a lot of people would say yes to that. They might not want the newsletter, but I bet they want alerts. So that's actually a good thing to add.
So yeah, so there's different lists. They would be Courtney, you have a list that you send out. Mike has a list and I have a list.
So I'm going to write that specifically because I think people would really like to get alerts. Yeah, they might not want the newsletter, but I bet they're going to want.
That's all I had on that.
Emergency alerts.
Can they sign up for those lists on the website?
They currently can now, I believe.
But it's, it's only when Ronnie sends those out.
Oh, oh.
Okay, let's, let's add that. That's, that's, that's important. Even though that doesn't fit my stated goal furthering, but it does because communication is.
That's right. That's.
Dancing communication.
Connected with Siren?
No. No. Siren's like the, the New York State website where it alerts you via text message, email.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yeah, and you can get county alerts.
Yeah, you can.
I'm wondering if you can also get town and village alerts as well on that.
We, I don't, I don't, we, so if you have a sewer spill, you have to go into the, call the watchtower up the Adirondacks to, to send out a notification to everybody. And it's kind of a pain. So we do do it when we have sewer problems. But I don't know if you can physically do that. Yeah. They, they have to pursue that sirens, alerts, I believe.
Wolfgang, are you still there?
Still here.
So I will say, one more thing about the REC partnership is that I sent an email to the group saying, this is kind of tangential to the REC partnership board meetings, but I would like to have a discussion countywide about the youth services that are provided by like seven to eight different organizations and how that can be sort of streamlined. And I got a little bit of pushback from some people saying like NGOs are not going to want to like talk about how they can be dissolved and incorporated into other NGOs. But I also got some positive responses from some of the legislators saying that they really think that there's a need to kind of address this issue countywide. So I set up a separate conversation from the, from the REC partnership to sort of like look at youth services and see about the county kind of taking a role in consolidation and reorganization, although it's not going to be an easy fix. But anyway, that group is happening. You're welcome to join if you would like.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Along these lines, the JYC, we had our meeting. It was reported that the county hired now a fourth person. I have no idea what they are doing, but they are now four people there. They have to cut the budget. So I have no idea where, where the money is coming from. But anyway, so we had also some discussions about the YES and the learning web and things like that. And even the learning website, yeah, they do basically the same like we do, but they are not willing to open up, or not willing, but they are not very forthcoming in opening up their waiting lists. So one organization has a waiting list, the other one has capacity, but they say they talk to each other, but that's probably it. So I, I understand and you're probably right. These NGOs, they don't want to dissolve themselves because that's all, all jobs, of course. But at the same time, they are complaining about not having enough, enough manpower and not having enough programs going. So I think there is a need. We'll see where it goes. But thank you for taking that up.
Do you have anything you want to report in addition?
Well, there is only, the, the applications went out, the JYC applications there on the website now. And we expect the responses by July 1st, I think. That's pretty much it. We do some field trips now. So everybody got assigned an organization and we visit them during the summer. And that's pretty much it from the JYC.
Okay. Does anyone else want to mention anything else before we sign off? Okay, if that's everything, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Susan, seconds. All those in favor?
I.
I hope you're having a great time.